Good evening, I'd like to call the Board of Trustees to order on Thursday, May 24th at approximately 5:45. My apologies. Hey Chad?
Hi. Name's going to be around six.
Don't worry, I didn't read it either.
I did.
When we moved the board, I thought we...
Sorry.
Would you please join me in rising to the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is required by the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call these...
Baker?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
Ferranco?
Here.
Zajcik?
Here.
Nito?
Here.
Burdo was excused.
Yes.
And Bell, we're waiting on.
Yeah, he indicated to me he'd be here at six. He thought I was at six as well. He'd be right at the edge.
Approval of the agenda as published.
So moved.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes as published.
I will make that motion for the April 17th meeting.
Second. Comments, changes, revisions?
Could be.
Pleasings?
We have a couple of typos in there that I will fix.
You want to point them out?
On page three, I misspelled Pat's last name and I called Rob on.
Oh yeah.
You were reading his license plate.
Must be.
Right, yeah, right. The wife's license plate.
It's one of the nicest things that ever been called outside of my name, so.
Okay, comments and correspondence. Does anybody in the audience care to make a comment about a non-agenda item? Yes?
I would.
Pardon?
I would.
Okay, would you please state your name and...
My name's Fay Blue.
Could you come up to the microphone up here so we can hear you a little bit better? It's right up here. Yes, please.
...so I don't know I'm building a... I am a building. Could I read your patent today? I'd like to read it.
Okay, would you state your name and address, please?
Fay Blue, F-A-Y-E-B-L-U-E, 105 One Madison Castle Lane, Sister Bay.
Thank you.
The purpose of this correspondence is to voice my concerns to the Board of the town in the title of 24/7. Excuse the oops there, but it should be 24/7. Intrusion caused by E. Taylor, Inc. I first called the village office in the summer of 2017 to report this activity and was told unceremoniously it was a business, we can't do anything about it. Since then, the noise has increased considerably. Last week, I was in contact with Fred Gillett, who referred me to the village zoning administrator. As a result, I visited the village office last week and I spoke with Tasha Ross. I quickly realized that I was not the first resident to bring this situation to the Board's attention. In short, Tasha basically said, "The Board knows about it, the company knows about it, they're working on it, be patient." I could only ask, "What is being done about it?" It is difficult for me to believe that authorization was given to E. Taylor to proceed with expanding warehousing space by positioning semi-trailers with operating refrigeration units 24/7 on the current established property. So I need to understand how once a permit is obtained by a business in Sister Bay, that business may now utilize the property in any manner they choose with no regard for the surrounding residential community. I feel Steve Soder, President of E. Taylor, willfully and knowingly made the decision to expand warehousing space by positioning semi-trailers, operating refrigeration units on the current established property, aware of the problem it would cause, but probably also presumed it would take months, maybe years, before action would be taken. This may be a solution for E. Taylor, but at the expense of the quality of life of the neighboring residents within an estimated half-mile radius. The residents are subjected to incessant droning, rumbling, humming, and during the night, 1:30 and 3:30, there is a ramping up with a sound like farm machinery starting, for lack of a better description. It is necessary for me to run the house furnace or fan around the clock to try to offset what has become a torturous intrusion. It is impossible to block it out. This callous disregard for the community and its citizens by E. Taylor has caused me personally undue anxiety, sleepless nights, and a growing anger that I should not have to experience, especially in a county that advertises "Live Life Well." It will soon get worse when summer, warm summer days and nights will prompt all of us to enjoy our patios and homes with open windows. I was born and raised in Door County, although life took me out of state for many years, I look forward to my annual or more visits than the 20 years previous to retiring. Leaving the peninsula, it was never easy, but I had to return to my job in the Russian cacophony of my city life on the west coast. It was thrilling to finally buy a home and settle here in 2007. It always amazed me that I could lie in bed at night and hear nothing but silence. It was wonderful, however, no more. For the first time in 11 years, I've considered moving, but now have to wonder if selling is even an option, having to disclose E. Taylor as a neighbor. The following excerpt was taken from the planning and zoning page on Sister Bay's website. "The village has adopted its own zoning code and the village administrator was responsible for seeing that all the provisions of that document are enforced. The enforcement of the provisions of the zoning code is carried out to protect," and this part I like, "public health and safety and welfare of village residents and citizens." In Sister Bay, the zoning administration is also the code enforcement officer. "Before work begins on any project, no matter how small you think it is, please contact the village's zoning administrator at 920-854-4118." This is a rather vague description of the responsibilities of the zoning administration can be interpreted in many situations, however, it does mention provisions to protect the public health and welfare of village residents and citizens. I can say that this nerve-wracking situation is affecting my health and well-being. So now that E. Taylor, Inc. has accomplished this expansion and continues to severely disrupt the life of the surrounding residential community, the question is, what steps are being taken to expeditiously cause E. Taylor to find appropriate housing and bring back the peace and tranquility we once relished? And by the way, E. Taylor is also operating two more semi-trailers next to Shopko for their own space in the west end of the building. If and when proposed apartments are constructed just south of that location, there will be another potential community problem. I invite the Board to spend 48 hours on my lawn, or better yet, on the lawn of Greystone Apartments, or in the Berchwood Complex, or Orchard Point. After your second sleepless night, I know will give all of you a firsthand feel for what the surrounding community residents are forced to endure 24/7. I try not to believe that this business is going to be allowed to continue to destroy the quality of life of the residents because, quote, "They are one of the biggest businesses in Sister Bay," unquote. I try to remain optimistic that the Board will not consider this to be the determining factor. I am hopeful that the Board is taking steps to expeditiously cause E. Taylor to find appropriate housing and bring back the peace and tranquility we once enjoyed. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay. Does anybody else want to speak or comment on this particular item?
I'm sorry?
On this particular item? Okay. Fay, I want to make a comment, if I can.
Yes?
I am painfully aware of this, as I had a house across the street from the one down by Shopko.
I thought so.
Right. And I can understand your concerns and issues. I can tell you this, that we've been working with E. Taylor. They are in the process of expanding their operation outside of Sister Bay. They're closing on property in Sister Bay. They will be physically moving that location, and we have a commitment from them verbally by the end of this month, by the end of May, they will have those by the Piggly Wiggly removed and out of service. The ones down by Shopko may remain a little bit longer, but within a few weeks, they're all going to be gone.
Can I hug him?
Not yet. Not till it actually happens.
Well, they should move it, they're moving to Pennsylvania, but I thought it was...
Well, they've actually bought property out west. They bought property in Pennsylvania, warehousing, storage, are growing exponentially across the United States. And they just closed and opened the warehouse in Pennsylvania. And as that is being brought up to speed, they're moving the operation from Sister Bay out east, where more of their business style is. What they're currently shipping out of behind the Piggly Wiggly is moving out east, which is why that's going to be closed down. They're also buying other property within Sister Bay, which is out of that area, where they're going to put together more of a marketing operation and less of a storage. There'll still be storage, but it won't be... They're building new storage that will be indoors, so they don't have to use those that equipment.
So, this is going to happen at the end of...
The ones by the Piggly Wiggly, they verbally told me the ones by the Piggly Wiggly will be gone by the end of this month, May. Okay? There may still remain one or two down by Shopko for a period of time, but those two will also eventually go away. They have already closed and purchased property in Sister Bay to move an operation to where they're going to build a larger warehouse to take care of any remaining outdoor. Sure.
Should've come earlier. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Right, thank you.
It's not the company, but I am going to be... Thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Right, thank you.
That's a really quick action, Dave.
Anybody else have a public comment? Joel?
Hi, I'm State Representative Joel Kitchens. We're not in session right now, so it's an opportunity for me to get around and see what's going on with the local governments and catch up on your issues. Because we're not in session, there's not a lot to report to you. I think certainly next session, transportation's going to be a really big issue, hopefully we can put more money into that. Now is a good time again, since we're not in session. If you guys do have issues that you would like to see the State address, it's a really good time to give those to me, because my staff has more time now to work on things to get away for the next session. So I guess that's all I have to say, unless there's some questions anybody has about these.
Nothing? I guess, you know, and this happens regularly, and I'm sure it happens in other parts of the state probably, the Dells and so forth, all of our seasonal businesses. If you look at the Facebook pages, everybody's screaming not only for help, but for housing. So if there's anything you can suggest for us to do, or if there's state assistance in any way, shape, or form, for whether it's the visa issue, or helping to import, you know, big city kids here for the summer or something, and housing, I mean, that remains to be at the forefront of our minds as to how to help the businesses with those issues.
Yeah, it's a huge issue all across the state, certainly, and obviously in a more tourist area like we have here. The visa thing, that'd be more of a federal issue, I can't do much with that. I'm open to suggestions, I don't have a lot of ideas on how to get you more help up here. And the housing stuff, you know, potentially could be some grants as plans begin to develop, I could certainly explore that and see if there's any assistance that we can offer, because obviously that's a big part of it. But yeah, very good issue, growing up.
The continuing high-going issue.
Yeah, definitely. Anything else?
No.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
Thanks, Joel, for stopping.
I can dovetail onto that a little bit. This is part of the comment section. Okay. I had the opportunity, through my county board hat, to visit the White House yesterday. Several supervisors from across the state were invited to go to the White House and talk about local issues. There was about 100 of us that attended, and... The side note was, we did get a White House tour, which is kind of cool. But then we had a conference in the afternoon, and we met with their intergovernmental, local elected officials, people, and what they're trying to do is they're trying to reach out at the local level directly from the federal level to get local input. Might be hard to believe, but I came away convinced that they're trying to... They've met with 15 states so far. They expect to meet with the rest of the states before the end of the year. They gave us all kinds of contacts, people to contact directly with issues or ideas. They're looking for ideas without necessarily having to go through 14 layers. It's directly from the White House, intergovernmental affairs. So yesterday, we also met with Sean Duffy, who's one of the congressmen from Wisconsin. Met with Jake Ligonkugel, which you'll understand that name. He is a special White House advisor for the BA. We met with the US Department of Health and Human Services, and we talked about, for instance, one of the issues that came up at county level for us was some of the federal government options or incentives that they're trying to make people work when they're on some of the safety net programs. And the question that came up, well, in an area like Door County, where you only have a four or five-month season, where you have a lot of employment, and then all of a sudden you have no employment, you know, how does that kind of work out? So we were able to voice our concerns with that. They had heard that once before from another state, we were the second state to kind of bring that up because of our tourist area here. And we have contacts of some people there that are going to call us back about that. We're also able to talk with one of the undersecretaries from the Department of Transportation and talk about some of the infrastructure funding that's needed at a local level. A lot of the grants that the feds were giving down to the state, they kind of pulled back on, and at the same time, they turned around and said they were going to increase by about $60 million of money to the state of Wisconsin for some of the local infrastructure improvements. So it's going to be kind of up to us, villages, towns, to make sure our voices are heard with our infrastructures on that. We also got to spend some time with the secretary of the Department of Ag, Sonny Perdue, who is the agency secretary for that. Department of Urban Housing and Development. We talked with them about summer worker housing, about guest visas. Supposedly, they are looking at some type of summer worker slash worker, temporary worker visas. They're not sure how it's going to come out, but at this moment in time, there is, I don't know if you heard the news today, yesterday, there is a, some type of bill going through the two houses right now concerning immigration, and those are the guest workers is going to be part of that. Trying to make it a little bit easier. Then we also heard from Kellyanne Conway, spent about an hour with us, she's a senior counselor for the President. She talked to us about the opioid crisis and where the state of Wisconsin sits in the middle of that. The state of Wisconsin is 17th in the nation in opioid abuse. So she was speaking to us about that, and some of the incentives and programs they're going to try and put in place to address some of that. We also heard from the... Oh, Sonny Perdue spoke to us, he's from the Department of Agriculture. The state of Wisconsin is the 16th largest exporter out of all the states. Which I didn't know that. And it has a lot to do with dairy, it has a lot to do with egg commodities that we have, and there's a lot of issues with our neighbor to the north in Canada and what they're doing or not allowing to be doing with, in particular, dairy products, agriculture products, beef, et cetera. And so they're working on those issues, those directly affect a lot of farmers and egg growers and owners in the state of Wisconsin. So they're working on that. And let's see what else. That's pretty much it. We got, they gave us, they ended up with the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs giving us a list this long of people directed at contact and all these different agencies having to do with local issues. And they are encouraging to pick up the phone, I would give everybody these lists. If you have a question, you can call these folks direct. They guarantee they'll answer your phone or get back to you within four hours via email. That was what they guaranteed. And I didn't bring it with me, but Sonny Perdue has this postcard that he hands out to everybody, okay? And it's Department of Agriculture, US Department of Agriculture, slash call Sonny. Okay? And his whole department will guarantee a full response, either by telephone or via email back to you on, through local issues. So we came away quite impressed that they're looking for our input, and they're looking for us to bring things up. And the more we bring it up and the more we let them know of things, hopefully, maybe we can make things happen. So that's my report for now. So this is a comment, but not a comment. I wanted to give Dan the opportunity to talk about an agenda item, which has to do with item eight.
Item number seven, your resolution 378, I believe?
Yes, right.
So this is my non-comment.
Okay.
I was here in March and presented to the Board and gave you a packet, and I saw in your packet now for this meeting, you have some materials. So I just wanted to update you on what's changed since that point. First of all, in terms of what I asked you to think about when you're looking at that resolution are simply the whereas clauses, and then the conclusion, which is asking you to help support so that the state, and eventually Congress, would look at doing something about the outside money that goes, not directly to candidates or parties, but all of that outside ad stuff. Since I saw you last, in terms of around the state, I believe when I saw the packet you have has 120 municipalities from Wisconsin, that is now 131. On the April election, eight municipalities had referendum, not resolutions, two of them counties, all eight passed by an average of about 80%. So when I say this is nonpartisan, and that asking you as a nonpartisan Board to back this, it's the politicians and the parties that are playing this as a partisan issue, not people. So that's up to 131. In Door County, since I saw you last on April 17th, actually, the county board passed the resolution asking the state directly to take it up, and that night, the Town of Gardners. So that became, I believe, your packet is 15 out of 19. It's now 17 out of 20 Door County municipalities that have passed this. And so far, the yes, and I'm not asking to pass this because of the else's, look at the resolution, but right now, the total yes votes are 58 to 3. So local Boards are seeing this as a way of, one, how this challenges your local control on a lot of issues. I won't go into examples right now, let's keep this brief, but I can if you want me to. And that as nonpartisan Boards, you are representing the village and are their voice. And if Sister Bay is like all these other municipalities where they are passing referendums at 80%, they're asking you to speak up and pass this. So basically, that is all I have to say. If you have any questions when it comes up, or at this point, I'll take those, but thank you for considering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any correspondence?
There's a number of it. Do you want me to read it, or just describe what it is?
Just describe it.
Okay. There's a letter from Elizabeth Weaver, and she basically states that as the owner of the property located at 10481 Field Crest Road, she reiterates her opposition to the decision of the plan permission to allow a wedding barn event venue next to her property. Then there are also letters from Keith and Vivian Mino, Ellen Goodrich, Sandra Reasonour, if I'm mispronouncing anybody's name, I'm sorry, Cliff and Kim Anderson, Paul and Barb Risto, Steve and Julia Punt, and Elizabeth Weaver again, in which they state that in accord with the zoning code, section 66.1709, a protest ordinance 251, which amended the zoning code in such fashion that assembly halls are allowed as a conditional use on the parcels where the wedding event venue is, and that's in the R3 district. In addition to those letters, there's a letter from Sunshine House indicating that they'll be hosting the 16th Annual Corn Fest, and it's a fundraising event, and if the village would like to participate, they'd certainly welcome that. Then there's a letter from the Town of Liberty Grove that stated April 25th, that was sent to property owners along Kenosha and Humboldt Roads, stating that there'll be roadwork on those roads over the next few weeks or months. Then there also is an email from Ann Prewald from the DNR, and in that email, she states that the public will have an opportunity at two upcoming open houses to learn more about the department's recently completed regional master plan for properties located in the northern Lake Michigan coastal ecological landscape. Those meetings will be conducted in Sturgeon Bay on Tuesday, May 29th, and in Pestigo on Wednesday, May 30th. The one in Sturgeon Bay is from 5 to 7, and the one in Pestigo is from 1 to 5. And then there's also a thank you note from Kathy Inquest for the plaque that the Board presented to her, and she also states that it was a pleasure working with all of you. Finally, there's a letter from the Sister Bay Historical Society, from Fred Johnson, the President, thanking the village for their continued support. And then the last piece of correspondence is the quarterly Sheriff's Department call law. It's included in the packets, and there were a number of different calls. If you review it, you can see what those calls were.
Was there anything of note that the Sheriff's Department brought up about their call law?
No, they didn't. They said it was basically just standard stuff.
All right. Any trustees have any additional correspondence they have?
No, I didn't.
Okay, item number one, public hearing and the creation of tax income financing district number two, serving the South Highway 57 business corridor. Bob, want to give us an overview before we open the public hearing?
Yes. The village created TIF number one in 2008, and as that district grew and changed, development occurred, did not occur as expected, I was asked to explore the viability of creating a TIF district on South 57. And developed the plan for you, which starts at Frontier Telephone, runs down to Flint Ridge, country, Flint Ridge, Field Crest, and picks up in part the wedding barn, all of the lands west, east of 57, roughly 29 parcels. And looked at the cost for infrastructure improvements, and looked at the development potential for that area. And prepared a plan that shows that the cost of infrastructure is economically viable if certain development occurs, and it provides the village board the option to proceed or not proceed with those projects based on the economic viability and return that those districts, that that development creates. The TIF district is a means to capture the growth that occurs, the new growth that occurs in an area, which means whatever the property is assessed as of this past January 1st, as growth occurs there, if someone builds a new home, builds a new building, expands an existing facility, and creates additional increment, the village captures the value, the total value of that, whatever the total tax is, tax levy is, the village captures that growth. Instead of it going to the school district, the county, NWTC, the village captures that and uses it to pay for the infrastructure. And the, under the assumption that without the creation of the TIF, those projects would not be economically viable. On the South 57 corridor, there are areas that are contaminated with salt in the soil as well as agricultural pesticides. There's very large, very long runs that make special assessments very difficult to be affordable, and the TIF is a means to facilitate growth in that area. When I worked with the Department of Administration, they indicated that since a portion of the work or the piping sewer and water, and basically force mains, sanitary force mains, sanitary lines, and water lines run through TIF number one, there needs to be a portionment of the cost. So approximately 5% of the project cost is attributable to TIF number one, which is before you as a TIF amendment, and 95% is paid for by TIF two. As I've worked on this project over the past about six months, there have been activities that have come and gone. The development is in a constant state of flux. You never really know whether or not today's promise is going to happen a month or two months from now. But what the TIF creates is an ability for the village to fund infrastructure without taxing the rest of the residents or the rate payers by using the growth that occurs there and capturing it instead of having it go to the school district, to the county, and to NWTC. The benefit to those entities, if these, if the projects that are proposed create jobs, they're likely to create jobs with young kids in school and families. Family and job, and child... The school district is struggling to retain its enrollment, so creating family-supporting jobs brings those people here, is good for the school district. The economic activity that is created by new jobs, most of the jobs that are proposed are not tourism-related, so those jobs operate year-round, which certainly has a much higher benefit to the area than the seasonal four, five, six months out of the year type jobs. benefit to the area than the seasonal four, five, six months out of the year type jobs. And those, we had the joint, first joint review board meeting, and the members were supportive of this process moving ahead. I don't know, I could, I could talk for a long time. I know you have a lot of items on your agenda, so I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, and this also had a discussion in the hearing at the Plan Commission?
Yes.
The Plan Commission forwarded that and recommended?
Right. Now, there's two, there's two parts to this. One is, if TIF number two is created, then hopefully by implication, that means that you will also approve the Second Amendment to TIF number one, which adds roughly seventy thousand dollars of a potential one-point-eight million dollar infrastructure cost to the TIF one schedule of work. Again, and I need to emphasize this several times, the only improvements that are done there are the ones that you, as the board, authorize a development agreement with. And in the absence of that development agreement, which would require the infrastructure to go in, this, this is, this is a planning tool that, that creates an opportunity for you and developers to make infrastructure improvements without, at a lower cost, effectively at a lower cost. And so, TIF number one amendment adds roughly seventy thousand, but doesn't change any of the other planned components in TIF number one.
And that seventy thousand amendment is because of the five percent?
Yes, it's because of the five percent. I think the schedule of expected projects that were last identified in two thousand eleven was roughly fifteen million, so if you add seventy thousand to fifteen million, it's, it's a really small number. It's a really small number.
Anybody have questions, Bob, before I open up the? I'm now going to open up a public hearing on the creation of tax increment finance in District Number Two, serving the South Highway fifty-seven business corridor. If anybody would like to speak on this, please rise, state your name. If you can't speak loud enough, I'd ask you to come up to the microphone so we can understand you. Does anybody want to make any comments? Please.
I have some questions. My name is Barbara Bristol. I live at ten forty-three Northwoods Drive, so I'm adjacent to the Wedding Barn property. And just, we just bought the property, so we're just coming up to speed on kind of everything that's happening in that area and the TIF district as well. So I just wanted to walk through the math and make sure I had all the pieces?
You, you would not be in the TIF. You would not be in the?
No, I know that. I know that. But as part of that neighborhood, we're in the middle of the TIF.
You're surrounded by?
We're surrounded by the TIF, yes. So if I'm looking at this option two, there's option one and option two in the TIF, I'm assuming that the preference right now is to go with option two, which includes the Wedding Barn.
Correct.
My understanding is that there's an extra seven hundred thousand, give or take, in cost associated with option two, and that most of that's related to the Wedding Barn.
Correct.
And then if I look at the project list, I think that the Wedding Barn is the boutique hotel?
Yes.
And the potential value?
The reason I gave it that name was because it was talking about a business, and a Wedding Barn doesn't necessarily trigger in people's mind what I think the business activity is, which is, in effect, motel spaces and entertainment spaces. So it most likely sounded like a boutique hotel, that, that was the description I gave.
Sure, sure. And that totally makes sense. I just didn't want to make an assumption that I would be wrong. So if I'm reading again this correctly, the potential value of the boutique hotel, the Wedding Barn, is a million six?
That's the numbers I was provided.
Okay. So my first question, and when I think through the math, is, you know, is, can you justify as a village spending an extra seven hundred thousand dollars for a property that's going to be valued at a million six? I'm not sure that's quite a connect for me. This is my second?
You want me to answer that question?
Yeah, sure.
One of the things that's built into that analysis is developer contributions, and they're identified as that, which is, the Wedding Barn would incur certain costs to put in their own, speaking of them specifically, the Wedding Barn would, would have to absorb the cost of putting a private well in, addressing the fire flow, the water capacity for fire flows, as well as onsite wastewater treatment. So all of those are costs that they have to, they would have to pay for if they proceed with, without any municipal sewer and water.
Sure.
Plus, they have the ongoing maintenance costs associated with those things, which is a little more challenging if you're running a hotel as compared to running a sewer and water utility, or like Mike, you're, you're, it's a much harder, there's a lot more to it than people realize. So the village has an expectation that there will be developer contributions coming in to help offset the, those total numbers, so...
So in lieu of them having to spend it to do another property?
Right, right.
They contribute to the?
They would be contributing to the village to help offset those costs.
Okay. And how much of the four hundred thousand developer contributions would come, would you anticipate would come from that?
I put down two hundred. I did not, I did not sit down, I was not partying to discussions with the Wedding Barn, so, and I didn't have their, their infrastructure cost. It could certainly be more than that. It depends on what, what their cost for a fairly high-capacity well, and for the sanitary system. There, that could be a third or forty percent of their total project, particularly if they have any water contamination issues associated with the salt in the water, groundwater.
Okay. All right. So half a million, then, give or take, in your analysis, half a million of the additional cost, after you subtract out the two hundred developer contribution.
Is what?
Between option one and option two?
Oh, okay.
The totals, the total increment is seven hundred thousand in cost, less the two hundred that the Wedding Barn, the developer would potentially contribute.
Correct. And then, and again, that could be higher.
Right, right. Okay, so that makes sense to me. Then when I look at table six, the projected tax increments, that is very clear. There's an expectation of when the money will be spent on the development, or the tax revenue that will be collected from that, and when we give it a net present value, we're at a million four.
Right.
Moving then to table seven, this is where I had a little bit of trouble with the payback. The loan, so it's the million four seventy-five in total project cost, less the carve-out to TIF one, right, is the million four.
Which table are you on?
Seven, the debt payment schedule, option two eight. It shows a loan amount of a million four.
Million four oh one.
Right.
Okay.
And total payments of a million nine eighty-one.
Right.
But the net present value of the incremental tax is a million four. So it doesn't seem like if the whole of this finance pays itself back. It seems like there's a shortfall in the interest. I apologize, I'm putting a lot of numbers into the book.
I looked at, on table six, I looked at a net present value of a million five twenty-eight, and I guess if, if you're including the, all of the total debt payments running out to the end of the term, there's, there's about five hundred thousand, I'm sure.
Okay. Okay. And so, yep, that's what I wanted to confirm. I'm going to make sure those things are there.
So I guess I'll end on that.
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay. Anybody else? Any other comments? Yes?
Just going along with that, Elizabeth Leiborg, my property borders on two sides, in the R three with the Wedding Barn. Is there any idea that they have done a feasibility study to make sure that they can actually sustain the development there? Projecting what they think?
Okay, I, I'm sorry, but that's not what this, what this hearing is about. This hearing is about the TIF district, not whether or not the Wedding Barn, the Wedding Barn is not an issue in this, in this particular hearing.
Well, I would argue, though, that the feasibility of the developments is key to the TIF district. If these developments that are in the near term don't happen, but the infrastructure goes in, then the TIF doesn't pay itself back.
Let me clarify, I was going to mention, no infrastructure is going to take place unless the development takes place. And the village will not be running sewer and water down to the Wedding Barn unless there is other development along Highway fifty-seven to make up for the shortfall and the infrastructure costs to do that. We wouldn't go out and borrow one-point-four million dollars to put the sewer and water down to the Wedding Barn if it wasn't going to be paid back by other development along Highway fifty-seven corridor prior to that. So I will tell you today, we're not putting sewer and water into the Wedding Barn unless there's other development projects that are inked, signed, ready to go on other portions of Highway fifty-seven.
Same with making the, in effect, a four hundred thousand dollar contribution from the two developers, the, as the, as, as those developments move forward, as the engineering is completed, and things get clearer, the village can basically make up the difference between the net present value, the cost of debt service, so it ends up being a positive project.
Right, you may, you may, the village may be to negotiate higher contributions from the developers based on what they're actually going to end up putting in. This is a model that Bob put together with some projections that he was given. What actually ends up happening when it comes in place, then the final numbers actually are put together. So it could be higher, it could be lower, depending upon what development actually would take place or not take place. But the Wedding Barn, nothing's going to happen there sewer and water-wise and infrastructure-wise unless something else happens, something else large would have to happen, or multiple items would have to happen down the corridor of Highway fifty-seven to get, to get it anywhere near the Wedding Barn at this point in time.
And what do you anticipate that tipping point to be? At what point do you say we have enough to move ahead?
It depends on what the project is. For, for instance, somebody could come along and put up a project for two million dollars total, a quarter mile down the road. Well, that's still not going to get it anywhere near the Wedding Barn. You may, we may only have to run the piping three hundred feet to service the first project that comes along. You wouldn't build the entire infrastructure loop until it got farther down, so multiple projects would have to occur before you would build the line down far enough to get to the Wedding Barn. If you had multiple projects that occurred all at the same time, that met all those infrastructure requirements, then yes, then you would borrow and, and run it down that way. But it would have to make sense within the TIF district on the payback, and you'd have to have the development placed. I can tell you, I'll share with you, what started this whole conversation was we had three different groups approach us about putting some fairly large development along Highway fifty-seven. That's what started this process and this thought process, was if that's going to happen, we want to put a TIF in place so we can capture and recapture cost of infrastructure. Otherwise, we end up putting it out, and every, all the ratepayers end up paying for it instead of people that are developing the project. So that was the idea behind the TIF, was to capture back the payback as much as possible, if not all of it, and not affect all the other ratepayers. But a TIF at this point is a big if. If this happens, you have, if, if in fact the TIF were to begin operation, you'd have to have multiple developments in process approved, signed off, and agreed to before anything would happen.
So tonight, you are possibly approving the TIF, but not any of the spending or projects?
Correct.
Got it.
We're, we're, we were looking at approving the model of the TIF, the structure of the TIF.
Those projects would come to the Plan Commission, to the Utility Committee, and to the Board for approval, and each of those would take some time to be assured that they make sense economically, that they're in the right location, the pipe sizings are correct, things are located in the right, in the right spot. So it's really, it's a framework to facilitate development down the fifty-seven corridor.
And the modeling that Bob put together was based on the developers that approached us and what they were looking to do. So Bob modeled based on that and what could potentially happen along that, and that's how we had the infrastructure drawn and put together, so we had an idea of what we were talking about.
Sure. I'm a finance person by trade. A budget is just, it's just a thing to go. I get it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else on the TIF?
Vivian Nino, one oh four three nine Northwoods Drive. I just have a couple of questions on the maps that are in here. On map number, it's map, map number four, land use. You have the wedding venue properties quoted as commercial zone, and I just want to state my objection, it is residential zone.
Which map are you looking at, ma'am?
Map number four is TIF district number two, and number one, V map four, land use.
Okay. What, what, what I looked at was what the use of the land was being put in rather than what it is all. There's another map that shows the zone. And so, in my opinion, not on the sort of plan committee, but in my opinion, if you are putting a boutique hotel on property, then that's going to be a commercial use. It's not going to be residential.
And I guess we agree with you.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Sadly, we agree with you. That is a commercial use on residential property. Yes, that's, that's my point, okay?
That's the use of the land.
Yeah. My other question on the map, just, I believe just ahead of that in the list, it's not numbered, it's, it's clean?
It's a, it's a Robert E. Lee map.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's one that shows the proposed sewer and water lines.
Yes.
There's like a road that goes north, I mean, it heads east and west, but it's north of the wedding venue property, and it shows lots on both sides of that road, and then that road takes a ninety-degree, degree turn south, and ends abruptly at the wedding venue property. And I'm just confused on?
Let me see which?
It's on page?
Why, no, but let me see if I can?
Okay, yeah, you're on the right one.
If I look at the same map, you're right.
You are looking at, I'm saying that, this is yellow, and you can't hardly see it on printout.
Oh.
It's like a road, because these are lots.
Yeah, the, the potential extension. Was that the lot?
Yeah.
Behind Marston Anderson's property there, yeah.
What, what the village is trying to do is, is provide for orderly sanitary and water line extensions.
Okay.
This property owner approached the village and asked about sewer and water, so he could create lots there.
Okay.
And that has since gone by the wayside, but when, the reason I included this map was it had a lot more detail than the other maps that I had. You can actually see where the pipes are, you can see the lots and sizes and totals, so it had a lot more detail, and I thought it was more, depending upon your perspective, it has a lot more information than the other maps. So what Robert E. Lee did is they looked at what would be involved with how you loop the system and connect back to here, and having, in particular, having the water system looped is, is really important because you feed water from both ways, have better water pressure, and so that's why it went up there. That since went by the wayside, I, I understand that Janelle had a meeting with, with that owner, and he thought the village was going to put in all of the residential infrastructure, and then he decided that, that that wasn't what he really wanted to do.
Okay.
Is that, is that correct, Janelle?
Yeah, Mike, can I help with that?
All right. I guess I still have a question, because then you have, that I never know how, is it Abahoke or Abahoke Trail ending abruptly?
The official map should, should pick that up, so that he can't, he can't build lots without it, without it connected.
Okay, that's, I was like, looking at that going, there's something has to change here, you're, something has to?
And that's, that is out of, outside of the TIF district.
Yeah, okay. But it was figured into it because of the way that sewer and water?
Right, and again, I did not have them take that stuff off. Those costs are not incorporated in the one-point-four million. That was just the plan that, that they had. That was just the plan that, that they had provided. Mike was having discussions, I was having discussions on how to provide service.
All right, you have actually answered my other questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, there's nobody, we will close public hearing. Discussion on the proposed creation of tax increment financing district number two serving Southside 57 business quarter before again, a motion would be in order first.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Discussion.
So somewhat to reiterate for us and for the, the audience too. So in doing this, we need to do it in a timely fashion to get it set up. We're not expending any funds other than the creation of the TIF, which is in six digits rather than seven when you look at large projects. And so this is just more procedural, allowing the potential to benefit from it for potential future development.
I'm going to ask Bob a question.
You'll be, you guys will be the first to know if, if something happens within TIF two because though that developer or that business will be coming to the office and saying, here's my plan, here's what I'd like to do, and, and then you'll start the review process and, and proceed. And some may or may not include underground utilities. Doesn't, you know, there's roads, there's sewer, water, there's improvements that, that can go in to encourage or assist development.
Can I clarify something? I don't know if this will come up on the next conversation, but my understanding is, based on previous conversations, TIF two, if something happened in TIF two, if we created, you, the money from TIF two could flow into TIF one? Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, what, there's, there's a concept in the state code that talks about donor TIFs. And it's, it works under the assumption that a municipality could have several TIFs. And in part, they're, they're, you're not using this, the word gambling is the, is the right term.
It's a bad word.
But you're, you're hoping, you're hoping that your plans over a 20-year period of time work out. And anybody that can really foresee 20 years of municipal future really has incredible insight. What, what the statutes allow for is if a municipality has more than one TIF, and the second TIF is really growing very well, it's exceeding, there's, there's more money in it than is required for the debt service, which is not, if you think, it's not completely impossible anywhere. But if, if that's the case, working with the Joint Review Board, and let's say TIF two had excess money far beyond its, its projected debt service cost. TIF two could transfer money into TIF one if TIF one needed it. One of the other things that I did do in TIF two was I looked well beyond the Robert E. Lee plan and looked at the original CUPAC study, which took sewer and water all the way down to the historical site and then all the way up Fieldcrest, which has benefits to the Fieldcrest owners because the improvements put in in that fashion are then not assessed, especially assessed against the abutting owners. And the way the land currently lies out there, it's relatively low density residential uses, at least on the west side. So there's some benefits, but I did include that as the, as a real long-term cost, which was about another $2.5 million. But who can really foresee what kinds of things could happen 10 or 15 years from now if development marches south on 57? You could see the need for lift station and more water and sewer all the way down to that corner. And the, under the CUPAC study, it does provide, there's areas in the town that could, that could be served as well. So the CUPAC study was a really good guide on how to deal with this. And it, it could become a donor TIF.
So I want to stick with that for a moment. The way that TIF two is drawn, there's a number of items in TIF two, a number of properties in TIF two that are on the north end of 57 that could be developed fairly soon without really any major, any, if any, infrastructure changes.
Yes.
And we have a project that we're aware of that's going to go into one of those properties. So that would potentially gain increment without any infrastructure costs or any infrastructure borrowing.
Potentially, that could be done.
Yeah, and so if nothing else were to happen down Highway 57 and the rest of TIF two, that increment that was generated there from any new increment on those properties that didn't generate any infrastructure costs could donate into TIF one.
Correct, and I guess I would, I would urge the Board not to pull money out right away.
No, of course.
You know, look at it more of like.
I mean, it can, it can sit there and accumulate, I understand, I'm just.
Yes.
Trying to, I'm trying, I'm trying to ask all the questions.
Yes, that, that's exactly what could happen. And I did add road repair, roadway, uh, roadways, infrastructure. Because there's, there's potentially intersections or roads that, depends on where development happens, that they would need to be improved. Because you're, you're, you're changing the type of traffic that would be on those roads. Or intersections.
I, I would like to just clarify, especially for new property owners who might not be aware, Bob Cuffrin was a longtime village administrator for Sister Bay, who has been a very astute servant for us for many years. We've worked with him, and he knows the village very well. So it's not somebody coming in from the outside and looking at data and then applying pie in this guy's stuff necessarily. I, I would just also like to add that, as kind of a reminder and a forewarning to everyone on the Board, one of the things that Bob did that was very astute years ago was add a provision to our zoning code that said in a situation that would exist similar to what we're talking about, that it would be permissible for employee housing to take place on the same development. I think we all need to commit to being open-minded about how necessary that may well become as we get to the point down the road, if it does happen, if the TIF happens, that we need to be serious about in the development agreements, et cetera, of having these new employers account for employee housing. If the numbers that Bob has been providing in quantity are accurate, and that this is going to add 102 permanent jobs, this is going to make what is already a crisis beyond a crisis if we don't consider this as the point when we really have to say, hey, you know, you're going to have to start taking care of employee housing when you do development. The only other comment I would make is, I think we have to be cautious and attentive to the numbers that Bob's being provided and what types of these jobs that this would be providing, okay? If, it's hard for me to make the leap to assess that if this is going to create 102 new jobs, that those 102 new jobs are going to have average salaries 45% higher than the average salary of the 88 jobs that are being retained.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you have to be cautious in your conversation at the moment. You're approaching some closed session material that was this. I know it's in there, but.
Okay.
We had a number of closed sessions with that particular developer.
Okay.
Provided that information, provided the data, it was solid information, solid data.
My only point I wanted to make there was it would be easy on the surface to look at a number like that and think, oh, well, you know, a preponderance of these new job people that would be coming, they could get hired, they could come to town, they could buy a house, everything's rosy. I don't think that's necessarily the case, and I just want to emphasize in my comment that, you know, what we're looking at is something that's going to really make us need to address the employee housing issue.
I did, I did contact DCEDC to get information on manufacturing and office type jobs. And that those jobs are, there's not many of those north of Sturgeon Bay. So he, he provided me information, I reviewed it with Dave. I believe the developers had an opportunity to look at that, so.
And the developers concurred with that, with those numbers. And they share the same concerns, Rob.
Okay.
They share the same, internally, they don't, they don't want to bring 100 jobs here, not have someplace to live or stay or live or be able to purchase.
And that, that's, my, my whole point is.
And that's kind of the catch-22 in northern door. They're, they're committed to staying in northern door. In order to do that, they have to address a number of concerns. So they're trying.
Thank you.
If I could just add one other point. I started drafting this back in January, first part of January. And over that period of time, there have been a lot of things that have come and gone and come and gone. And, and one of the difficulties is to make significant changes every time somebody says, well, what about this, or what about that? I had to basically kind of say, it's as of this date. And anything that happens after that date is, again, this is, this is a plan. It's, the only promise that the Board's making is to create lines on a map and a framework to encourage development. There's no promise to spend any money. It's, it doesn't change the zoning, it doesn't change the tax rate. It, it doesn't, it's just lines on a map that are invisible to virtually everyone. And so if, if my, if something doesn't happen, some of these things were, things that I believed were underway and actively being pursued back in early March. And it's, it's really not, I can change it every week, and then every week, everyone would be looking at different numbers and saying, what changed? But you know, it's, it's, it would be very difficult to make sense out of documents that every time I sent them out, they would be different.
Any else?
No.
If not, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? And the Treaty Public Hearing, the proposed second amendment to the Tax Increment Financing District Number One, project plan to add a project to the schedule of projects as part of TIF two, TIF number two.
Bob? TIF, TIF number one was last amended in 2011. When I, when I spoke with the Department Administration about the creation of TIF number two, I kind of wrestled with whether or not it should be a separate TIF or an expansion of TIF number one. And it really seemed that, that it made more sense for it to be a second TIF to, to keep the costs and projects separate. The DOA said, though, that I had to allocate a portion of the cost that benefited TIF number one. And there were seven properties that would benefit. So when I figured out the land area of TIF number one, there was a very small portion of TIF number one that would have the potential for benefit. So it's great, basically 95% of the infrastructure cost is charged to TIF two, approximately 5% is charged to TIF number one. One of the promises that TIF number one did was tell, basically, that those commercial projects would not be assessed for the improvements going in. So the TIF number one, TIF number one improvements are to be paid for by the TIF increment. Similar with TIF two, both, it's the same way for both. The promises, the increment will pay and that you'll not be special assessed. So TIF number one, second amendment adds $71,000 to a schedule that's roughly $15 million. So it's, it's a very small number. Whether or not all those projects in TIF one get done, that's still, that's up to the Board and the development that, that could, will continue to happen.
Okay, I will now open up the public hearing on the proposed second amendment to the Tax Increment Financing District Number One, project plan to add a project to the schedule of projects as part of TIF two. Would anybody like to speak about that? Going once, twice, okay. I will now close the public hearing. Okay, discussion on the proposed second amendment to the Tax Increment Financing District, project plan to add a project to the schedule of projects as part of the TIF number two. Do we have a motion first?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second? Okay, discussion. Questions? Everybody understand? Make sense?
I'm good.
Anything to add, Bob?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Item seven, discussion regarding a resolution number 3378, which supports a constitutional amendment to all limits on campaign contributions to conduct a non-binding statewide referendum, considering motion for action appropriate. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 378.
Second.
Discussion.
Presentation.
Good presentation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
Item number eight. Review draft development agreement between Village of Sister Bay and Allen Gokee and Christopher Schmelz for Marina Development LLC for the construction of a condo hotel on a property located at 10722 North Bay Shore Drive, considering motion for action appropriate.
Okay, after March 27th meeting, the Plan Commission jointly reviewed a rough draft of the development agreement between the village and Al Gokee for the construction of a condo hotel on the property located at 10722 North Bay Shore Drive. For anybody that's been here for a while, that's commonly referred to as the Candy Church property. Some grammatical revisions were suggested by the commission members, and they have all been made. A revised version of the development agreement was included in the meeting packets because after the, the draft was reviewed by the Plan Commission, we discovered that there was a change in the principal owners, and there was a new LLC involved. So that LLC is now Marina Development LLC, and the principal owners are Allen Gokee and Christopher Schmelz. The draft of the development agreement is in the packets, if anyone has any questions.
This was reviewed and recommended via the Plan Commission?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Any other questions?
One question I had, do we need to, do they have to pass a resolution to adopt the development agreement? I couldn't find it in.
No, that'd just be my Board motion.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just have one question. One of them's a landscaping.
What page?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What page?
Oh, well, it's just in general, page 120. Landscaping and site work, I, I read somewhere, I don't even, I'm not even 100% sure it's there, but it gives basically, see, six months, the landscaping needs to be completed and certified within six months of occupancy of building. What's our ramifications of doing anything if they don't do that?
Well, you can withhold their occupancy permit?
But six months of occupancy, that means after. So you can't do that.
Oh, okay.
Because I think we're experienced with one of these developers on Mill Street that is behind that department. And I'm not sure where that agreement is, but I'm just, before we enter. we enter, something that I hear about all the time. You know, Chris has a good reputation for getting stuff done, which is great. But what's our, as a governmental body, what does that even mean?
I had a similar question on that.
Yeah, just like, just, you know, what, what does it mean?
We do have some limited enforcement action that we can do. Of course, should we get the village attorney involved? Generally, that was put in there to allow for our seasonality. If development gets done later than what anticipated, now it's the middle of winter, you can't necessarily do landscaping. So it was allowed, it was, it was to allow that time for that to occur.
I don't think it's unreasonable. I just think if we've experienced problems with it, with its parties, we have to look at it a little differently.
Well, we had an issue with one of the developments, and the landscaping wasn't done. The screening wasn't done like it was supposed to be done. Before Zeke left, he and I went all over the village and looked at all these projects and saw what was done and what wasn't done. With this particular one, the landscaping wasn't done, so we contacted that developer. He'd had his occupancy permit. We made him provide, I believe it was $1,200 in escrow. And now in spring, if that planting isn't done, then we'll take that money and we'll see that it's done.
Okay.
So that's how Zeke handled it.
Okay. So not much.
Well, other than maybe in this, we say, if it comes to the point that the landscaping isn't going to be done, and we're going to issue the occupancy, the landscaping money does go into escrow, and if that date comes, we're using the money, and we're going to get it done. Then the money's already there, so you don't need enforcement. It's there, it'll be used if we, if it runs that length of time.
And that's how... Right, and you really want the escrow to be enforcement, because we don't want to be in the landscape business.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Right.
Absolutely not.
Because, to be honest, yeah.
I just feel like we have a couple, we, we spent a lot of money on this, this thing that's attracting people to develop. And when, when those developments become eyesores, it reflects on us as the body that governs.
Well, and, and like now, with that money that's in escrow now, if he doesn't plant them, then we'll contact the landscaping firm and see that it's done.
Okay.
So that ensures that that's done. And it, it, according to what Zeke told me, it gives the developers incentives to get it done because we may hire somebody that's much more expensive, and then all that money's gone, where they could have done it for half that if they'd have hired their own landscaper. So hopefully that'll work.
I, I just wondered if, the way it was worded, if they were saying it was supposed to be done prior to occupancy or that, but Chad.
And it's, it's, you know, it's unreasonable to do that. I get that. But...
So do you want to make a change to it, or go?
What are your guys' thoughts on it?
I think it would be a good idea to amend it to include some verbiage on a dollar amount of escrow that would be held, that if it doesn't happen, that there'll be escrow money there totaling X amount that will be used for the purpose of getting it done if it's not.
And that goes in when they come in for the occupancy permit, or?
I think that would be fine. They don't need it any, any before.
What does the developer think?
I guess timing, if we have an occupancy permit, let's just say in May. And to your point, if not be able to get plants in the ground easily, or, you know, April, I think that gives us that enough time to do that. I would say, just, just, you know, give us enough time to make sure we can do planning's right, we're not going to put something in just to, for, just to get an occupancy permit, and that's going to be, just, you know, it's not going to be done at the level it should be done at. So I, I think your, your request is absolutely reasonable, for sure. I mean, just, I mean, you know, the, the intent was to give us enough time, if it is incremental, why didn't we sneak it in? So we would just say, you know, by a certain point, you know, a month into the growing season, I think that's fair.
Two first?
Well, I mean, if, if, things happen.
Right.
Can you have your building things? So if you intend it on being done in June, July, it should not get done until September.
Or November.
Or November.
And we're reasonable in that department.
Yeah.
Right, you're not going to say, in March, you have to put them.
Right, right, no.
Well, and, and Zeke and I had talked about this before you left, and I asked him specifically, should this be in the development agreements? He didn't believe so, because he said most people will be able to comply with it. He said you, you would just use that as an enforcement tool if you had to, and that he had the authority to do that.
But if it's in the development agreement upfront, the enforcement tool's there already, there's no...
Yeah. Question?
So you wanted to say, prior to issuance of an occupancy permit?
How much do we want there?
That would let the administrator or administrator, interim administrator work that out at that period of time. Because there's landscape plans, pretty easy to determine what should be.
Okay.
And we're not trying to figure it out six months before it's built.
The amount, how about, the amount sufficient to cover the cost of the total landscaping shall be submitted to the village. And that'll go at the end of section three.
Perfect.
Anything else? All in favor?
I ask for one. Please, on section sixteen two, there was, I was asking for no exterior construction work throughout during June thirtieth and Fall Fest. Is there a way we can do, we're hoping to get site work in before June thirtieth, you know, this next month. If we can, you know, work the same time schedule, we discussed about the hotel site, that we can do some preliminary work, site work, to make use of that premium weather and so we can get on the roof before, before the snow flies.
So what are you talking about? Give me, give me a date.
Sure, so it'd be after Labor Day, that Tuesday through Thursday?
It would be the same dates as I think they let CHAP.
Yeah, you, you received those, you, you received those dates.
No, we decided it wasn't okay for that.
Yeah, you, you received those dates because you have a good standing history of delivering projects and that.
Hey, wait, wait, wait. We just had this discussion this afternoon. Do you have the information of the dates and times that we?
Yeah. For the hotel?
Yes.
Okay. What was allowed for the hotel?
What pages next?
Okay. That site prep and related work will be allowed Monday through Thursday from September fourth, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day, through October third, which is the Wednesday before Pumpkin Patch Festival, on the condition that adequate safety fencing must be erected and maintained around the work zone at all times.
So that's what we allowed for the market. So you were asking for the same thing for Marina Place to Run?
Correct.
And what pages add on, Chris?
It is, it's section sixteen, item two, but I got, I don't have that.
Page eight of the agreement, one twenty-three in the board packet.
So it would say, no exterior construction work will be allowed to occur on the property, which is a subject of this development agreement. It'll still say between June thirtieth, right?
Yeah, not after June thirtieth, but that's, the, the exception we had was...
But will be allowed Monday through Thursday from September fourth. Okay.
That, that was an exception for your work on the CHAP.
Right, so he's asking for the same thing for this, and that's what we had in the discussion.
Right, and that was, you came in to the last meeting after we discussed and voted on what brought to the development agreement, which was that we were not going to grant any extension on this property, similar to the one you're referencing that you got.
So why would it be different than, than the hotel?
What we discussed and voted...
Wait, wait, wait. You've been trying to say something.
At our last meeting, Chris was here. Basically the same way Rob is, to ask for this. Al submitted a letter, I believe. We discussed it, decided because of other work not being done, we didn't grant that for that property. So the only thing that's changing is there's now a partner in this that has goodwill with us.
Yes.
And we already made a decision on it. Just, you know, you were there, we were there.
Okay, but it's now a different entity. You would have a right to come back and ask.
It's, it's, it's more than welcome for them to come and ask, for sure.
How is it a different entity now?
No, it's, 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 it's more than welcome for them to have a different entity and ask.
I'm not saying it isn't, I'm just questioning how it's a different entity now.
There's a new partner.
There's a new partner involved in the project.
Who was not involved last month.
He wasn't involved in the last one.
So one of the conversations that I had with Janelle Saffron, who I believe we relayed to you, was that a question came up for the property over here, the marketplace property, as far as parking and where equipment and stuff would go during that period of time in September through October. And what we decided we were going to do is refer to the Parks Property and Street Committee to sit down and have a more one-on-one conversation to decide what could be done and not be done, and then make a recommendation as to do it or not do it. Where we could sit down with maps and sit down, look and work through contractors, what the contractors could do and not do, and come back with a recommendation. And the board would either say, yes, let's try this modify, or let's not do this, or okay, fine, do what they ask, and have more conversation, like, because of the change. So if that's acceptable, that's what I was going to suggest we do, is refer this over to Parks Property and Street, let them take a crack at it, and send it back up. This isn't happening until the fall. We have time, we have time more than just a 10-minute conversation to sit down and try and figure it out, because we have to figure out the same thing for Marketplace. Okay.
Could we add, maybe then in the development agreement, that if Parks, you know, because I get, I was going to share tonight, it, it's a process, as you, as you well know, and it's, it evolves, and as you get partners on and contractors involved, as they look at how they're going to comply with safety and OSHA and all those good things, they're going to develop a plan. So that would be, if in the next few months, we're at meetings, discussing what our plan will be, once we have a more defined plan, and share that with you, that as long as it, that Parks agrees with that, I guess that's, at least it's, it's documented that we have it as long as it, we got that.
So our next parks meeting was scheduled June fourth, but you couldn't physically do it.
Correct.
We are open to, open to altering that date, where you could be there?
I think the next, next meeting would be fine, because like you said, it's in the fall, so we're, you know, that would be, in July would be fine.
Okay, so tell me again what you're asking for then?
To add that, you know, that with Parks approval, so allowing, and I can understand that, you know, you don't want to have these things going on, because you really know what they are. So what we're saying is, we're, we're going to, you know, make sure we work with Parks and describe what we're doing, and make sure everybody's on board, that they understand, that they understand what kind of work would be done, and that as long as Parks approve it, we would have those same, same.
Okay, Parks?
Parks would make a recommendation back here, and I think this board would...
Okay, sorry.
But, yeah, in concept.
Are you okay with that?
I, I don't, I don't know why we have to have verbiage like that in a revised development agreement.
Well, we don't need to put the verbiage in, but send the parks, let it come back.
Yeah. The intent would be to have Parks review it, is there a place to do it, can we manage it properly, and if so, we look at it, and we're in agreement, we grant it. It's not a unconditional approval, though. It's a work in progress, is what we're saying at this point.
So what are we doing here tonight, then?
Nothing, we're referring to Parks Property and Street to meet with the developers and see what's, you know, what we're trying to avoid is the issues that we have with surrounding businesses when CHAP was built. This is not a negative, but there were a number of issues that occurred, and we're trying to not repeat some of those issues.
That's some, some of what we're trying to not repeat. We're also trying to not repeat a building that has continual delays and doesn't get finished on time.
What, what room are you talking about?
Okay, wait, stop. That's not, that's not for us, that's not for us.
I started that project in July, and I got everything done. It took, it took me eight months. Why? He has a personal...
Okay, Al, please.
It's just not right.
Not appropriate.
You know, the way he's been treated at his meeting is not right.
Okay, Al, enough, please.
Okay, so you want section two on page eight or page one twenty-three of the ZOOM to read, no exterior construction work will be allowed to occur on the property, which is a subject of this development agreement between June thirtieth and Fall Fest weekend. Site prep and related work will be allowed Monday through Thursday from September fourth, the Tuesday after Labor Day through October third to the Wednesday...
I want to thank you, Bob, for all the stuff I'm doing.
...the Wednesday before Pumpkin Patch Festival, on the condition that additional safety fastening must be maintained and erected around the work zone at all times. Is that what you want that to read?
I wasn't sure we were there yet.
Yeah.
Okay, so don't put that in there, okay.
I mean, it may wind up that.
We're trying to work toward an acceptable plan to get to that.
Okay, I won't put that in there, okay.
To, to, you know, make sure the entire board is comfortable with it. I hope we do get there. I'm, I'm in favor of it, but I'm not hearing that necessarily on the other side of the aisle over here.
Okay.
I don't know. If you want it to be that descriptive, that's fine. That seems like we're basically saying yes before we've said yes.
I can just leave it like it is, that's fine.
We'll get there.
And, and we have amended, and we can amend, and again, I, I am for it. I, I would like to see a plan as to how it's going to work smoother and learn, but...
So just so that you know, Chris, that it wouldn't be approved tonight?
Right, no, I would say, I...
Okay.
But we'll work with you on a date, for the next date for them.
Appreciate it, my friend.
So we should work and reschedule the parks then, right?
Yes.
Okay.
When Chad can be there.
We moved him for me now, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. As an help Chris, obviously, but I can, I can be pretty flexible. Soccer games Tuesday and Thursday nights for Gray, so then I can make it worse.
All right, so the same's going to go for number nine, basically?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Right. Item ten, discussion regarding Marina Committee's recommendation of the village board pass on the DOT resolution number three seventy-nine, which requests assistance from the Wisconsin DNR for recreational boarding facilities, RDF. Grant funding, consider motion for action if appropriate.
Okay, the Marina and Finance Committees have approved proposed repairs to ADAC and JDOC, and there was redesign of the Marina public parking lot. And those repairs may be eligible for BIG grant funding from the Department of Natural Resources. If the village is successful in getting that grant, it would lessen the financial burden on the Marina and the village, and a related resolution is included in the meeting packets. If, if the grant is received, the village could receive up to 80% of the cost of the repairs from the DNR, which will be approximately $48,000. Amy, the Marina manager, is here if any of you have questions regarding that grant.
Yeah, no, it'd be great.
Yep.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I will make, I will make that motion?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Amy, would you like to add anything?
No, I, the application is due on June first, and they have a meeting in August, and we will find out at that meeting whether we are granted.
Oh, nice.
Okay.
A quick turn around.
Yeah. For a change.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thanks, Amy. Discussion regarding passing of optional resolution three eighty-two oh five two four one eight, which approved the 2017 Electronic Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, ECMAR. Consider a motion for action if appropriate.
Okay, every year, the, the utilities is required to prepare this ECMAR, which is included in the meeting packets. This year's document is a draft, or a draft of it is included in the packets, and it has to be approved by resolution. As you can see, we got all As, which is awesome, and Mike and the guys at the utilities should be commended for all their excellent work.
Straight As.
Way to go, Mike.
You're not a copy.
Excellent job, Mike.
Would somebody like to discuss this, or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item twelve, discussion regarding the purchase of a new trackless, consider a motion for action if appropriate.
Well, as some of you may have seen, the current trackless is in really bad shape. When they're out plowing snow, you'll see little puddles of grease all the way down the street. So it's definitely time that it be repaired. The Parks guys looked into...
Repaired or replaced?
Replaced.
Not repaired, replaced, sorry. Parks guys looked at a different, number of different options. Parks guys looked into a different, number of different options, and have decided to go with a new trackless. Initially, Tasha had thought that there might be a possibility of obtaining grant funding for that as well. Unfortunately, the grant she was looking into is targeted at economic development and safety. Based upon discussions she had recently with the application office, she's been informed that a trackless would not qualify for that type of grant funding, so the village would have to come up with all the funds for that piece of equipment, but it is something that's drastically needed.
And Finance had this discussion, and did what?
Finance recommended that the money that's available this year be used, and that then more funding be allocated next year to pay for it, so, and the company is willing to bill the costs that way.
So, we have a recommendation that we do it, we have a way to finance it to pay for it.
Makes sense, right?
They did do quite an evaluation of it, too. Danny, aren't you going to speak to any of the evaluation that you did? Or not about the trackless? Or be good with our discussion?
We've tried some other machines, and without actually trying them on the old streets, that's why we can't guarantee the trackless is the same machine, other than a lot of them.
As I recall, at Parks, there was another brand that seemed to be promising, that was significantly cheaper. A couple other communities purchased those, had problems with them not working correctly or rolling over. We even went down to a site over here by CHOP, where there's a problem, potentially what happened, and we tried running the trackless with this other machine, that's where they were, to show us some of the difficulties.
Yeah, we had a field trip on Parks.
So I noticed in the bid, there was a salt sander implement quoted we didn't go with. Is there, we just don't think that's a good idea? Or, I know this, this winter, I think we had ephrums, salt or sand a few times on the sidewalk. I mean, it is another six thousand dollars, and I get it, but at the same time, if it's the right thing to do, whether it's a hundred and twenty-one or a hundred and twenty-seven, or, you know. And then the other comment I would just make is, if you look at the websites, there was a company in Minnesota, you know, this thing sits in a barn probably nine months of the year. They put a fourteen-foot-wide lawn mower attachment on the front, so you're using it all year round. Is, you know, maybe we don't do that now, but the next time Parks needs something else, this be considered, that is there an attachment, that now you've got the main, you know, head unit, and you put the attachment for additional mowing, or whatever may be needed, if we can.
Yes, we did check into that.
Okay.
And the old one didn't have an air conditioner in it.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't a good way to get ventilation, so.
Got it.
The hot summer days, it was, I think it would do is, this new one comes with an air conditioner in it.
Okay.
Included in it.
Okay, good.
And are you comfortable with the attachments that you ordered with it?
Yeah, it's virtually the same, just all.
Okay, what about the salt or sand spread of it?
Well, we're not sure about that yet. We heard that you can end up spreading the salt up onto the grass more.
Oh, okay.
It might just be better off just to hit the troubled area by hand, of the ad storm, having from coming, that throws some sand and salt.
Well, yeah, we see, talk about it.
Yes.
Okay.
But obviously, Pat has thought about it, so if you decide in the future that it's an issue, you can come back and talk to Pat.
Well, you know, if it makes sense, I mean.
Well, air conditioning, Pat might be cutting your ass, well.
Okay. Did we make a motion on that?
No, not yet.
I'll make a motion that we purchase it.
Second. As recommended.
As recommended.
As recommended.
Second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Harry. Welcome to your new trackless. Discussion on village's bylaws, review of the 2018 committee in front of worksheet, spreadsheets, on which trustee and committee member appointments have been delineated, affirmation of all present in this place.
That information is in the handouts that you got from the meeting.
Okay, so, I want to interject, they're not all done. Some of you asked for some changes, they're not done yet. The last three weeks have been a little hectic. I've only been in town about seven days out of the last twenty-one. But, so what, we need to make committee appointments, or we can't hold committees after April 3rd. So, what I was going to do was keep all existing committees as they were, with a couple of exceptions, until we discuss this for the next month, and then there may or may not be other changes. I put Rob down wherever Kathy had committees, to be on beam. And also, took Denise off of fire board and put Rob on fire board. So those are the changes that I'm recommending for today, at this point in time. And I'll have discussion of each of you over the next month, thirty days, if there's anything additional we need to do next month. If you're okay with that.
Good.
Is there anything different from an initiative standpoint that I would have to do when I'm the only board member on one of these committees or commissions? Am I, in essence, running it, or do I just wait to interface with whoever's at that?
Do you interface with whoever's at the other boards or commissions, like the library board, or store society, et cetera? They have, right, they have their own group, they already have a chair.
You're a voting member.
You're a voting, you're a voting aide.
And you also wanted to confirm the citizen.
Yes, and then the citizen appointments, although there's a number of vacant ones, we'll fill those in, too, but we need to reconfirm the ones that are existing, with one exception. Mary Kay Shumway is currently shown as a citizen specialty member for Plan Commission. I have not had a chance to speak with her yet, so I'm just leaving her name blank at the moment.
Okay.
And we can add it next month, or if there's somebody new, we'll put that in. Other than not the ones that were listed for the citizen members, we're reconfirming those for this year.
So, for instance, the Fire District Exploratory Committee, is that the same as Fire Board?
No.
Okay.
That's a separate committee that hasn't met in quite a while, but it still exists out there as a joint or potential effort between all the towns of Minnesota, as a vote in book. Meets occasionally, when somebody gets an idea.
And then.
It's about it, yeah.
Now, putting me in for Youth Center Board, and what had come out at the last meeting or so, was that it was basically inactive?
That, that comes and goes.
Okay.
Somebody else may come along and decide, you know, well, let's have the youth center again, and then it re-resurfaces itself.
So, are you saying then that?
You don't need to do anything with that.
Okay.
At this moment.
So the best one to be on Rob.
And if you have a way to resurrect it, that would be great.
Okay?
Okay.
So that's what I'm recommending. Somebody will need to make a motion, second?
I'll make a motion. Accept Dave's recommendations.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Harry. Thank you. Recording county activities, I think you heard that one earlier in public comment. The only other thing we did have was a board meeting Tuesday morning before I'm not watching that. And it was pretty much just a lot of coverage of, there's a number of text amendments made as own issues within the county. That covered the majority, but there's also a report from the Door County Humane Society. The Humane Society was actually acquired by the Wisconsin Humane Society. So it's now a part of a larger group, instead of a standalone or affiliation, it's now actually owned and operated by them. So they introduced a new director who has been here, just moved here from, I don't want to say where he came from, I don't remember, but he just moved here, he's been here about thirty days. And so he's getting used to it, and the county, as well as the village, does subsidize a bit of funding to them, which they're always appreciative of. So they introduced that, and let us know that they're going to start new programs, they're looking to augment the existing Humane Society, provide additional resources, that have not been available before, on a county-wide basis. Review the 2017 financial statements and management letter discussion bearing those documents, consider motion approved 2017 financial statements.
Tasha was unable to attend this meeting, so she asked me to basically let you know that the Finance Committee has recommended that the board accept the 2017 financial statements and management letters presented by Schenk. Auditor Amber Dresky of Schenk met with the Finance Committee a couple weeks ago, and reviewed the financial statements, you should all have bound copies of them. Basically, the auditors drew attention to the decrease in the fund balance, and they also drew attention to the village's debt service and debt margin. They stated that the utility continues to perform well and be well managed. The Marina produced operating income of one-hundred-sixty-six thousand five-hundred-thirty-eight dollars. And basically, in summary, the village should continue to monitor the fund balance year-to-year in order to meet the minimum fund balance policy for cash flow purposes. They also believe the village should assess its outstanding debt service and how that will affect future liabilities, and should scrutinize additional spending in the TIF and consider other mechanisms to recover costs if the TIF can't pay back the other funds. Tasha is fully aware of the concerns of the auditors, and is working diligently to see that those matters are addressed.
I guess I would make one comment, when they made this presentation of Finance, I think I got this right. I think the numbers are close. The TIF went from a negative three sixty, three seventy, to a negative seventy-five.
Yeah, that's in the finance.
I thought it was a positive.
It was a positive, but it was a significant incremental improvement.
Right. Yeah, it started showing positive for the first time, really.
Significant.
Right, right.
Amber stated that she's happy to report that the deficit in the TID went from thirty-three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand to sixty-seven-thousand. So, that's pretty dramatic.
That's a good, that's a good one to remove.
I, I just have one question. I was not at the presentation of this that happened recently. I recall last year, at the presentation of the audit, there was the question of difficulty in their identifying exactly how much cash we had on hand because of, if I recall correctly, the interlacing of the utility money. It made it difficult for them to add that up, but that they assessed at that point that they, to the best of their idea, there was two-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars cash on hand. Does anyone else recall that from?
I don't think that was exactly the.
Last year?
Type of a conversation.
Okay.
Utility is always separate, way separate from general operation of the village. So within the utility, they may have had different funds, put in different line items, and they couldn't come up with what the dollar amounts were necessary that matched, they didn't find that. And the same thing was true on the village side. Tasha, in the last year, came to the board and asked the board to eliminate thirty or forty line items, and put it more in group categories that made more sense. So instead of having fourteen line items with money in them, allocate different projects, she took the projects and said, well, this is all Parks projects, this is all sewer projects, this is all fire projects, and lumped them into smaller lines, so it was more easily accountable, and you still see it.
Is there a point in there where they actually say how much cash on hand that we have, or is that?
There is, at the end, at the end of the audit, they always specify it's the unassigned fund balance and general fund. That is, that is the number that's valid for one day. The date, that particular data they cited is the only data that's valid. The next twenty-four hour period is smaller valid. They have an indication of what it is, because it's a flowing number.
Just like our personal stuff.
Snapshot.
Snapshot of that day. So it comes down to what they call the unassigned fund balance. And that's our reserve money, where we want a twenty-five percent balance, if you will. And then we have money above that, and what they couldn't determine is actually how much cash was above that twenty-five percent. That was available, but the last number I saw was above that number, we were good, like a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
I believe so, something like that.
Something like that, above our twenty-five percent. And where that comes into play, that's money that is, it's not a slush fund. It's money that would be available to be assigned to something else on a one-time basis. You could use it for a project, you could use it for equipment, it's not to be used for operational expenses. You could use it for capital, and you could use it, for instance, for part of the trackless purchase.
There's your sander.
It's, it's unassigned fund money, it's money that's not assigned to a particular issue.
A snowmaking machine.
Like a snowmaking machine, right. And so potentially, you could take money out of that, if something unexpected occurs during the year, that's, that's an unassigned fund that you could take from, money from, you could also apply it back against taxes at the end of the year. There's a lot of funds that is very confusing.
So somewhere in here, there's an actual unassigned fund balance?
Yes, yeah.
If you had specific questions, I'd suggest that you come talk to Tasha, and she can give that all to you.
Natasha does occasionally give us maybe some quarterly, she gives us the unassigned balance.
That's what I was remembering, David, and that's what I think came out of that.
But if you notice, that's the kind of typical grain of salt he adds at that moment, that's what it looks like, but it's only valid.
My wording is different.
Thanks.
Um, you don't need a motion to accept it?
I'll make the motion that we accept the financial statements and management letter discussion from 2017 financial statement audit.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Harry. Good for you. What, no, what, yeah, what's the dollar amount on the bills to be paid?
Two-hundred-eighty-eight zero-three-three-two-four.
I make the motion that we pay the financial.
Second?
Dollar, that's one. I have to have the rest of the back, all right.
One-seventy-five.
One-seventy-five.
One-seventy-five on your Zoom? Okay.
Does anybody have any questions, any information?
I just had one minor one, let me find this.
Which page?
Uh, it was under Utilities. And, I mean, if this is really.
What page do you have, Scott?
One-eighty-two. Utilities is paying under the, for the info booth. Now, it isn't very much, it's eighty-four dollars and eighty-six, I'm just wondering why that's there, that's all. It's not a big deal.
It's my understanding that for years, that that's the Utilities meter, is that right, Mike?
Well, when we put that pressure-reducing valve in there on the, on the the gateway property, then they just, rather than run a service up to the building, they put the new service in by a pressure-reducing valve. And so then it was, it was worked out that the cremation booth would pay a part of the money. Then I kind of got a loss for a while on the utility that was paying all the light. And then this winter, when all of a sudden that light bulb that was normally forty dollars went to like three hundred dollars because of all the Christmas lights. I asked Tasha to try and figure out why the utility should be paying that higher light bulb. And my understanding now was Tasha and Stacy have worked to try and find that, like, when the Christmas lights are on, the village is going to pay more, and when the Christmas lights aren't on. They've got a percentage work, though, I wish Tasha was here to explain it to you.
We wouldn't understand it, anyway.
Well, I'd be too, I'd say, okay, you guys are satisfied.
And again, it's not a big deal, it's a whole eighty-four dollars, but I was just wondering why that was all.
But that's, that's what it, they have a fair and affordable way to pay for twelve months.
Okay.
They use a formula and.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
Any other questions?
No.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Harry. Report by the village administrator and village activities and projects.
Okay, well, there isn't a whole lot different in this month's report than in last month's, but there are a number of development agreements that are still just kind of pending. We reviewed the one for the Candy Church property today. Sarah Anderson and her attorney met with Denise Burdo and me to discuss some of the provisions of her development agreement. There are a few issues which still have to be addressed, and Sarah's going to be coming up here in June, so her development agreement won't be addressed by the Plan Commission until their June meeting. The Pre-Three Quarry Project is still being worked on by attorney Joe Goldbacher, who represents Cal Aiken, and Randy Nesbit, who's the village attorney. So that, we don't have to go to final stage yet.
Can I stop you for a moment?
Sure.
Anything with that in closed session, or can I ask Mike a question?
We're talking about some of that in closed. Okay. Zoning and building from. Zoning and building permits have been issued for Gustavo Golaro's in Pipca's property, and as you're coming down the mill, you can see that they're starting to clear the property and, and starting to work on that. The development agreement for that project will be presented to the plan commission in, at the Tuesday meeting on the 29th. Chris Schmelz of Haco Management has now submitted the landscaping, rating, and utility plans for his boutique hotel on the Marketplace property, and those documents are all going to be also reviewed at the upcoming plan commission meeting. As soon as the plans have been approved, then we're to the point where we can start working on the development agreement. The plan commission has been tasked with reviewing and recommending revisions to the village's parking regulations, and they have had two work sessions, which have been very productive with the upcoming season. I don't know for sure when they'll be meeting next, but Denise and I will be trying to schedule some mutually agreeable dates. The hiring committee is continuing to work on administrator replacement, and Steve Mann, who's been the village facility manager for, I believe, forty years, is that right, Danny, will be retiring. His last day of work will be June 1st, and I personally like to thank him for all his efforts on behalf of the village. That's about it.
Just in case anybody here doesn't know, do you want to make the announcement about Danny?
Oh, sure. Danny has been hired as the new facilities manager, and he will be taking over as soon as Steve leaves.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Okay. Facilities managers report.
Did you want to give that report, Danny? Did you have anything you wanted to mention? Okay. The one thing that, the report is in, in your packet, so if you read that, at the Parks Committee meeting, they did mention that the steps at the village hall and at the administration building are basically falling apart and are kind of hazardous. So the Parks Committee directed Danny and the guys from Parks to see that they're fixed by Hockers ASAP. The cost of those repairs is nine thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars. So the funds will be taken, like Dave said, for unexpected expenses on the unassigned fund balance. Tasha will do budget amendment, probably in ball, where we know how much the actual expenses are.
At the admin building, weren't those stairs damaged by somebody? Did you ever get any money from that? Do you think somebody drove their car up on them?
We got a settlement for that, and, and we did use that money to fix it, but it didn't work.
It was a patch rather than a replacement.
Her report is also in the packets.
Anybody from Marina want to add anything?
Other than that number one on there, we, they were bailing out because of health reasons, and we ended up funding, refunding a hundred percent of it, not just the seventy-five.
Could be sold.
And we were sold immediately.
Yeah, within the hour, so it's like.
And the ice is out.
Are you sure, Tony?
Pat told me, I haven't, I haven't even gone on yet, so.
Just so that you know, that Carmy old shared that rickety thing that was down by the Marina is going to be replaced, and a new one should be installed soon.
The old rickety one was picked up within hours.
Is it really?
Moved out to the street with a free sign, and thank God, my wife's going, I go, ooh, we can make a chicken coop out of my dog. I'm not moving this, I'm not moving this. Why don't you just think about it, she says. Later that day or go by, it's gone, I'm like, yes. So thank you, whoever took the rickety.
You'll see it out of the bay in January.
Maybe Cory took it, maybe Dylan took it.
Dave, is, is the swim pier part of Marina, or is it? Or is it?
Parks.
Okay.
Report from utilities director.
I think you have it, and I hate to say I forgot most of my stuff, but if you have any questions on anything that's in there.
No, so the lift station, there's no delays at this time.
No, they move right along.
Good.
Stop down, they're going to let you look, they're moving a lot of electrical panels around. Their, their trick is keeping everything powered while they're changing everything. They're having, right now, they're reinstalling everything that's good, and then they're going to try and do, well, they have to do one thing at a time, so like one pump, they're going to work, get it all switched over and be done, and then they're going to go to the next one, and the next one. Same with the well. They're moving right along. We got a few knockdowns, I mean, we got about ten or eleven thousand dollars, which I know is a lot, almost a million dollars, but we've got some, some reducts for that more change. July third is still the expected national issue.
Landscaping will be done within six months.
Never thought I'd be that guy. Denise rubbed off on me.
We are not planting any flowers.
When tents start to be commencing to damage, they're in trouble.
No, no.
As far as you know.
Right, okay.
Okay, anything else for Mike?
Good job, Mike.
Discussion regarding request of Wisconsin Public Service Corporation for village officials to define the location of utilities easement property located at 2279 Scandia Road, which is commonly referred to as main lift station number one, well station number one. Authorize execution of a relevant easement, consider motion for action if appropriate.
Okay, well, this agenda item is the reason that you got an amended packet. It came in late. The people from Wisconsin Public Service have requested that the village approve a twelve-foot by hundred-foot easement for the purpose of upgrading the electrical service at well number one in the main lift station. Mike is here and has any questions, if you have any, or has answers to your questions, if you have any regarding that.
Basically, what we're doing is actually moving our easement on our property. The easement that is there is on Denise's property. So since they're upgrading this, and they need to upgrade the power because of our upgraded lift station, they say, why don't you have your own easement, which is twelve-foot on the west side of the building, twelve-foot by the pole that's already on the street, just to the back of the building. And that will be our own sole easement. Well, public service, we're giving, we're granting public service permission to always maintain those lines and have an easement to do so. So I think, I think you should do that.
Yeah, sure.
And then at that other property, whatever's selling, we have ownership.
Somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, carry. We'll move down to committee reports before going to a closed session. Starting on page 193. Admin has not met. Administrator and cap oversight has not met. Communications technology did meet a while back.
Since the last board meeting?
No, before, was it before the last board? Yeah, it was. Never mind, he has not met. But I want to, remind me, I'd like to speak to you something after a minute. Coastal Byways.
That was Kathy's.
There is a meeting, packet of yours, a minute. D C A C D.
Have their annual meeting?
Economic Development.
That hasn't met.
Finance.
Those minutes are in the packets.
Pretty much it was the.
The audit.
The audit. Fire. Denise is not here, nobody else?
No, I'm here.
You are?
Yes. Partially, it's, it's getting late, you know that, Dave? May 15th meeting, just a couple small items. We're going to try and use an earth fire station a little more, it's just sitting out there collecting cobwebs. Mike Goldstone, who is the assistant chief, he may, he has an offer to go to Gibraltar as the chief. They're talking about hiring a chief, so we might be losing him. And finance, you can expect a June invoice for the rush truck.
That money's there, hopefully.
What's that?
No, it's supposed to go, what was truck? Any questions? Historical society.
We met on May 3rd. Meeting, we're still working on the new building update, looking at something approximately thirty-five to forty dollars a square foot. Do have a request for use of the barn on May 31st. Just updates on Spring Social, which is passed. And rummage sale, that's also passed. Worked on a volunteer program for volunteers, and they've got somebody who's done this in the past, and anybody who wants to go out and help with the cleaning, you're free to go.
Holiday lighting has not met. Library.
Could I interrupt once?
Sure.
Tasha and I were talking, now is probably the time when holiday lighting should meet and give the guys from Parks some direction. So if you could try to think of some dates that might work for you guys, that would be good.
I was thinking, to generate a lot more interest in this, we should call this holiday lighting and fireworks.
There you go.
Congratulations on your license.
Unless it's a blowstopper.
Yeah, you like booms.
Library. Marina, Marina Fest.
Well, we talked about Marina, there, it's in the minutes, you know, the way the grant funding, getting everything open, everything's looking good so far.
Parks, I thought we were going to eliminate that.
Yeah, I'll take it off the list.
Parks. Should be minutes in there, of course, there was the discussion on the trackless. There was discussion on flower planting and trees, and who's paying for what.
Well, and I'm assuming it's Parks that puts them out, but the navigational aids out at the bay are out, which is awesome. Last year, they didn't go out until like June. I would just say, I don't know if you get the schedule together, last year, they also took them out very early, like right around the Labor Day, and we actually have a lot of people that come in for pumpkin patch, whatever else, and those are navigational aids that, if we have people after hours, they really need them to see. So if we can at least till, at least past Fall Fest, keep them in till hopefully end of September. Ice isn't around yet, I promise. That would be good. And I don't know if you know about the swim pier, or if, you know, whoever's going to put that in, somebody mentioned, I think that's sitting out at.
It's by a dock right now.
Oh, okay.
And we got a couple of the swim buoys in off of that, while we're waiting for a couple of more, more swim buoys that are going to go in between, you could share in one, or more swim buoys, parkers.
No, that's good. We actually, we had a couple boats come up and we could pick up or drop off people on the swim platform as kids are jumping in behind propellers last year, so we're trying to. Have you guys, have you guys seen the destruction from the ice, et cetera, on the swim pier? That's what I mentioned to Steve earlier in the month.
You're aware of it for Park.
Because Marina has a guy coming, or when, when is that repair happening? Well, it'll, it'll probably be this fall, so we were going to do, ADOC is similar this spring. With the potential of the grant, you can't do the work before the grant, if, we don't know if we'll get one or not, but I asked Dave, and he said yes. We're going to throw on the application for the grant for the swim platform, or swim dock, just a hundred feet. The newer section's fine, it's just that front part. Don't know if we'll get anything. If we do, Parks can then say, okay, here's what it would cost minus the grant funding and do something, but, but I agree, it's, it looks, it's rough. I'm talking about the part that has to be looked at for being repaired before season comes. Have you guys been out there since the ice left and everything? I was out there yesterday. When you first start to walk out onto it, to the left, are those tie rods are exposed and all that?
That was fixed.
That was fixed, okay, okay. There's a bolt coming out, yeah. That's, that's what I was asking about, okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Anything else on Parks? Had a meeting, made some decisions.
Oh, okay, well, yeah. We have, we mentioned Danny. We, I think there's some stuff to talk about enclosed, but.
Yes, we have a couple more items, enclosed, that personnel is.
Okay, right.
So they weren't just sitting there, they were doing something. Plan commission. Minutes are in there, you saw the results.
Yep.
SBAA. Think the quarterly financials are in here?
Yep.
Yes, they are. So we would have to accept those. Our motion.
And I'll have to raise your support of the support.
I'll make a motion, we accept the SBAA financial report.
And?
And issue their quarterly. Yes.
One second. Did I hear you a second?
Yeah, one second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see how they're automatically in black again. Tourism zone, I know there's a lot of information in the packet.
Nate, do you, do you sit through that?
I have not made it in the.
Oh, okay.
Every month, every other month.
Must be a hell of a meeting.
Oh, it's good. Yeah, I was on it as a, a while back, yeah, it's painful.
Utilities.
Packets are in the minutes. Any questions? We covered everything. Mike, we're good, so congratulations on the straight A's.
Thank you again, I'll tell all the guys.
I'll make a motion, we move into the executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen ninety-five one C to confer with legal concept of governmental body considering the oral written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body of prospective litigation in which it is or likely becoming foul, Wisconsin statute nineteen ninety-five one C to discuss personnel employee benefits. Motion by Lino.
Second.
Roll call, Lino, yes.
Baker, yes.
Sashki, yes. Pranco, yes.
Ellie, yes.
Duffy, yes.
Your non-forestation, we reset for ten minutes while.